Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for July 22, 2024. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to this flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any just cause.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Don Larson.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Rachel Holtein.
She's sent a memo that she is going, she is on her way, so I expect to see her soon.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, in your packet, you have City Council meeting minutes for July 8, 2024. Are there any corrections to be noted? Counselor Larson. Okay, and that was on a, that's not on the minutes that we're looking at today. This was on a previous study session. Okay, and, okay, and you have already given that, given that clarification to the clerk, so if there are no objections to that, we'll let those previous study session minutes stand amended. And are there any notations to be noted in tonight's minutes? Hearing none, we will let those stand as presented with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Hearing none, we will proceed with the agenda as presented. We have no proclamations. We are now at our public's right to speak. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come and speak on any item not on the agenda. And I have one, one person signed up to speak. I have Lynn Browning. If you would please come to the podium and give us your first name and last name. Please spell your last name and tell us whether you reside or work in Wheat Ridge.
Yes, hi, I'm Lynn Browning. I work and reside in Wheat Ridge, and my last name is B-R-O-W-N-I-N-G.
Thank you, and you'll have three minutes, and the clerk will start the timing now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community supporters. I am Lynn Browning, a new resident and business owner in Wheat Ridge. You may recall I stopped by in March, and I'm here tonight to give you an update on my perspective of what's up in Wheat Ridge. My biggest takeaway so far is that the city of Wheat Ridge government and associated departments actively and authentically seek input from community members and use creative resources to develop and promote opportunities for healthy engagement. I've been busy getting out and meeting representatives of departments, including code enforcement, economic development, park recreation, police, and sales tax and licensing so far. I've received kindness and have been welcomed as I've taken part in community events and have shopped at and talked with many local businesses. I'll soon have been here six months, and I'm finding many opportunities to get involved and give back. I want to thank council members Holtein, Larson, and Snell for making time to talk with me. For those of you I haven't met personally, I look forward to doing so soon. Thank you all for your time and service to Wheat Ridge. It is noticed and appreciated.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Those are all the speakers that I have signed up to speak on citizens' right to speak. We will now go to our agenda items. Number one is the consent agenda. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 1A, motion to amend a contract with HDR Engineering Incorporated for design support services for the improved Wadsworth project in the amount of $120,000 for a total contract amount of $3,242,924.69. At issue, a contract was previously awarded to HDR Engineering Incorporated for design services during construction and to serve as the engineer of record for the improved Wadsworth project. In July 2023, council authorized an amendment to HDR's contract due to the additional work between 35th and 41st avenues, also referred to as Phase 2 of construction. Due to the amount of ongoing design-related efforts, additional funding is needed associated with both Phase 1 and Phase 2. Therefore, an amendment to the contract with HDR in the amount of $120,000 is requested.
Thank you. This will be a motion to council. It is not quasi-judicial. This is our consent agenda. May I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend the design support services contract with HDR Engineering Incorporated for the improved Wadsworth project in a amount of $120,000 for a total project cost of $3,242,924.69.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number two. Counselor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance for second reading, Council Bill Number 112024, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 11910 West 52nd Avenue from industrial employment to mixed-use commercial TOD. At issue, Confluence Development, Confluent Development LLC is requesting approval of a zone change from industrial employment to mixed-use commercial TOD for property located at 11910 West 52nd Avenue. The purpose of the rezoning request is to allow for the mix of land uses, densities, and urban form as contemplated in the Northwest SubArea Plan.
Thank you. This is a motion, this is an ordinance on second reading. It is quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Elena Livas Loera is here this evening.
Good evening. My name is Elena Livas, excuse me, Elena Livas Loera, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ2406, which is a request for approval of a zone change from industrial employment to mixed-use commercial TOD at 11910 West 52nd Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in red. The property is located on the south side of West 52nd Avenue between Ward Road and Taff Court. The lot measures about 100,000 square feet, just over two acres in size, and the property is currently unimproved and is being used as a boat and RV storage facility. The site is within the TOD area, located within a half mile of Ward Station. The property is currently zoned industrial employment. Properties to the west and south are also zoned IE and mixed-use neighborhood to the east. The properties located immediately across West 52nd Avenue to the north are within the bounds of unincorporated Jefferson County. The uses in the area are diverse and include low, mid, and high-density residential, commercial, and light industrial. The west side of the TOD area was home to the former Jolly Rancher candy factory, and the entire area has historically been industrial. But with the completion of RTD's G Line and the Ward Station and adoption of policies and goals for the TOD area, we have seen a shift in character, and several residential redevelopment projects have been completed over the last decade. This is a view of the subject property looking south from West 52nd Avenue. This is a view of the subject property looking west from West 52nd Avenue and Taff Court. This is a view of the established neighborhood looking north from West 52nd Avenue and Taff Court. The applicant is requesting the zone change to MUC TOD in order to redevelop the site for a residential or mixed-use development. Under the current IE zoning, the property could remain as-is and underutilized, or even develop into a higher-intensity industrial use. A zone change to MUC TOD would change permitted uses to residential and commercial and enable a development which would align with the city's adopted plans, policies, and goals for the TOD area and would work towards creating a more uniform zoning in the area. This table compares the existing IE and proposed MUC TOD development standards. The MUC TOD Zone District is intended for areas generally within one-half mile of Light Rail stations. The city created the MUC TOD development standards with regard for the surrounding areas, including residential transitions. MUC TOD zoning is designed specifically for the area between Ridge Road, Ward Road, 52nd Avenue, and Tabor Street. Many sites within the TOD area have already been rezoned to mixed-use, and several residential projects have been completed over the last decade. The permitted uses in MUC TOD Zone District would allow the applicant more flexibility to redevelop the property and would require compliance with the strict development standards of the mixed-use Zone District. I would like to note that the maximum height in MUC is taller than the current IE, in part because the property is located in the area that voters exempted in 2008 from the charter's height and density limitations. That means that a single-use building can be up to six stories or 90 feet, and a building that is vertically mixed-use can be up to eight stories or 118. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on April 3, 2024, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Nineteen people attended the meeting, and the notes from that meeting were included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is now a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from internal departments or outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to occupants and property owners within a 1,000-foot radius. Planning Commission recommended approval on June 13, 2024. Staff received three comments from members of the public on Wheat Ridge Speaks prior to this hearing. Staff reviews zone change requests based on several criteria and consistency with adopted plans and policies. Staff finds that the zone change request addresses goals and objectives of several adopted plans and policies, including the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan, the Comp Plan, and the Northwest SubArea Plan. The Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy outlines goals for the city to become a community of choice and to be competitive with adjacent jurisdictions by upgrading housing stock, increasing variety of housing stock available, developing employment areas, and targeting underutilized commercial properties for redevelopment. Within the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan, this property is designated as employment and TOD mixed-use, which aligns with the Comp Plan's designation of mixed-use employment. Goals of both include a mix of uses around the commuter rail station, including commercial, retail, and multi-unit housing, a pedestrian-friendly setting, and high-quality urban design and architecture. The Northwest SubArea Plan also designates this property as mixed-use TOD with similar goals and objectives as the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan and the Comp Plan. The distinction between the pink mixed-use TOD area north of the tracks versus the red employment TOD south of the tracks is of importance. In recognition of existing land uses, the Northwest SubArea Plan considers the Wheat Ridge Ward Station to be a job-focused transit station, and the current IE zoning in the general area helps reflect that vision. The city has been protective of the industrial zone land south of the tracks between the I-70 Frontage Road and railroad tracks in order to retain the potential for an employment base and additional job creation. Residential development and this particular proposal can be supported north of the tracks, but would not be supported in a location further south. The proposed zone change would enable all of the stated goals for this site to be achieved and would result in a high-quality development held to the strict standards of the mixed-use Zone District. While staff does not disregard the impacts of new development on existing areas, redevelopment promotes positive outcomes such as opportunities for neighborhood retail and restaurants that can benefit the area. New development also results in new sidewalks, more lively streetscapes, and improved infrastructure. Much of this relies on the presence of a strong resident base to achieve and maintain and would not be attainable under the current industrial zoning. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns in this area, the MUC TOD Zone District is most appropriate for the development of the site and meeting the city's goals for the TOD area, specifically goals for increased and diverse housing options, creating a mix of uses, and creating a resilient and robust transit center. Staff finds a zone change to MUC TOD is supported by the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan, the Comp Plan, and the Northwest SubArea Plan, and the request meets a majority of the zone change criteria. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, I'd like to state that Counselor Holtein has joined our meeting. Thank you. Before we go to questions of council, I want to, I have the members of the public here to speak, and our first speaker that signed up is Terry Foulke. If you would please come to the podium and give us your first name and last name. If you'd please spell your last name for the record and tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge.
Yes, my name is Terry Foulke, F-O-U-L-K-E, and I do not live in Wheat Ridge. I live in the unincorporated area of Jefferson County, directly keeping north of the property which you're talking about. I also represent the Estates of Rainbow Ridge Homeowners Association, I'm the president of that association, and I was here and testified on June 13 before the Planning Commission. And there were, there were a couple of things, I've read, or tried to read everything that I could related to all of your authorization that you got. And author, I don't have a problem with the authorization. We were never in opposition, and we're still not in opposition, for the development of the property. What we're asking for, we're asking for a reasonable standard on the property. In other words, that's the, that's the tallest point on that particular street. Why start out at eight stories and no place to go? Why not start out at a much lower footprint and take it down to eight stories, okay, if they wish, and at least maintain some sort of a flat distance, which is consistent with on the other side of the street? The new development results, it says, in, was just testified to, that there are new streets and new sidewalks. Those streets are brand-new, sore sidewalks. The infrastructure is brand-new also. They hooked into the water, electrical, all of that. They've done a complete renovation of 52nd Avenue. So I don't see where we're going to really benefit as, as citizens in that, in that arena. We, the other thing that was particularly concerning to me is that when I read the summary of the neighborhood meeting, which I know that there was a Zoom meeting, and then there was a meeting on the 13th. In the, in the minutes of the meeting on the 13th, there were six of us who testified, two other people, actually, there were four, I guess, altogether that testified. But there were also letters that were written and submitted on behalf of some of the neighbors, my neighbors that lived in the same HOA area. The only thing that I saw that was mentioned in that, and I want to make sure that this information is passed on to you, that you, that this, all of you are getting the full information for it, is that there was one individual who was a board member for the Hans Ranch Station Townhomes, and he spoke in favor. That he did. But why is he listed as the only one in here that spoke in favor, in favor of it? Because the next, the next statement is some concern was brought up about the height limit. There was major concern brought up about that height limit. There was major concern brought up about parking. Major concern brought up about the blind spots that the city has already created because of these buildings and the allowed parking that are there, and it's going to continue. There, there was also issues brought up about the buildup of ice and snow on those shaded areas, on those shaded streets. Now we're going to do it something that exists over on the east side, we're going to have it on the west side now. Only this time it's going to be on 52nd Avenue, in front of 52nd Avenue. We brought up the fact that, that the, the building is not consistent with the area. You put an eight-story building right there on that corner, and you've got three stories next door, and you got one story across the street for, for several distance, distance all along. Why do we need an eight-story building? And we know that that's exactly what's going to happen because, you know, when you buy that property, you're going to maximize profit, and to maximize profits, you're going to maximize thought density. And you're going to, you're going to go border to border, just as close and as tight as you think. Everybody seems to think that we're going to have commercial in there, that we're going to have restaurants, and we're going to have all of this other in there. We heard that there was going to be a restaurant in the, in the apartment building on Taff Court that they just finished a year or so ago. There's, there's none there. The closest to that is the old Jolly Rancher property. They have some property there that they're trying to sell for commercial purposes so that they can come in, put a shop or something like that. We were told by the developers at the last meeting that they've had great success with, with having a beer garden. You know, well, I guess we should also welcome maybe a hoopla lounge or something, you know, that, a marijuana shop, or you know what had. I just don't see it as taking off. The thing that we asked was that for the Planning Commission to abstain as far as accepting the change until they had some definite plans put before them. And in reading everything that I read today, I understand that that's not completely out of the picture, that that can be a request on your part and on the part of the Planning Commission, to have some plans in, and at the time. Now, I know that down the road, you're not going to, they have to come back to you with plans to be approved, and that's all fine and well. The other problem that comes into this is that what happens if the current developer decides to sell to another developer, the same way as they did over on Hans Ranch? We were told then that there would only be two stories, it would be as high as they would go. They sold the property, nobody was aware of that, and they built a three-story. And then they went down and put in a five-story apartment building on the block down below. So I guess we have a little problem, you know, and really believe in what we, what we hear. You know, we were, we come in and we testify, we told you to enjoy our testimony, that you really look forward to a public coming in. We feel placated, you know, by, by all the boards in the, in the community. And I'm not just speaking of you, of you, of this, of this board. I'm talking about the Planning Commission here, I'm talking about our bad, I'm talking about every place. So citizens come in, they offer their opinion, they offer what they know to be a fact, and it's not good enough because people have already made up their minds before they, before they see themselves. They claim that they have it, that they have. We know that, and we're placated by the fact that people shake their heads, they agree, they smile, they look confused, they, wow, you know, how can that happen type of, and the first thing that happens when they say time to vote, boom, everybody votes yes, we're going to take it. So I guess what I'm asking for is that will you take the time to slow this action down and make sure that we have something that's reasonable, that starts out on that corner? Otherwise, I'm, I'm good with the, with the manufacturing building for me, and it can be used for commercial. And we're supposed to maximize, the more people we bring in, maximize RTD. RTD is in trouble, and this building isn't going to save it, you know? It's going to take a whole lot more than that to save. We have, we have the homeless who ride in, who spend the day, sometimes they spend the night, and multiples of them. They deputate out there on the streets, they urinate out there on the streets, they throw their trash out on those streets, even down in the RTD. We have no law enforcement play, by RTD or by Wheat Ridge, none whatsoever. The cars come flying up and down 52nd Avenue. If you're not on the sidewalk, they haven't helped you because you're going to get run over. But yet there's nobody there, nobody at all. Cars stop in front of the apartment building on both sides, they pull up there, put their four-way lenses on, get out of the car, go under the building. When they decide to come back out and get in the car, who knows then, that you've got to go out and around it.
Mr. Goff, I'm going to ask you to sort of stay on, stay on topic.
Okay. That's one of our concerns.
Okay.
With this building here, it is a concern because we've heard that we've checked with, with all of the city, the police and the fire and everybody else, that they can all provide services. If we don't have police service now, what says we're going to have police service if we maximize the size of that building on that lot? So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have anybody else signed up to speak, so I'll go to questions of council staff. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you explain what types of setbacks do we usually do for, like, I, I know that we do, like, gradual when we're, we're putting bigger buildings into, like, areas like areas that have residential near them. What kind of setbacks do we, not necessarily like 15 feet, but like this many stories, this and that for the mixed-use commercial TOD?
Typically, there would be like a building step back where each story gets further stepped back. But it wouldn't be applicable to this particular property. Usually that applies to lower-density residential adjacency. So if you're immediately adjacent to a property that's zoned either residentially or agriculturally, and it contains a single or two-unit use, then the step back would be required, but it wouldn't necessarily apply in this case.
Counselors, my apologies. I understand that the applicant would like to speak now.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council members. Thank you, staff, and thank you, community members, for being here this evening. My name is Nick Kitayef, and I am a Senior Development Director with Confluent Development. I've been with the company for 11 years. I am a Denver resident. Do not live in Wheat Ridge, do not work in Wheat Ridge. I thought that it would be helpful if I just provided a little bit more context and information on who Confluent Development is. We're a 30-person development and investment firm, active really across the country. But we pride ourselves on our investment and our development activity here along the Front Range and in our communities. Our Chief Development Officer, Celeste Tanner, who could not be here tonight but spoke at Planning Commission, is a resident of Wheat Ridge. She's a long-term resident of Wheat Ridge, where she's lived for 20 years with her family. And we care very deeply about our investments and development across every project that we do. But we care even more when those projects are in our backyard here in the Denver Metro Market and furthermore, in places like Wheat Ridge where we've done a lot of business and where our team members live and work. We don't have a one-size-fits-all approach. Just because a zoning says one thing doesn't mean that we're going to meet and maximize that zoning and that height and that density. We look at every site with a different set of intentions, and we do a lot of listening. What I've really been encouraged about through this entire process, and I commend the city, staff, as well as leadership for setting up a process that allows the community to engage with a group like ourselves and inform us on what they are looking for. We've been excited since our neighborhood meeting. We were further encouraged at our Planning Commission when we had multiple people come up and speak and voice their concerns because it informs us on what the city and the residents really want. We want to put projects into communities that are successful. What that means is that they are serving the community that they are in. And the best outcomes come from great listening upfront, getting feedback at every stage of the process from the most important stakeholders. That includes city, that includes staff, that includes leadership. But most importantly, it includes our neighbors. And we take a lot of pride in that process, that iterative process of understanding what neighbors want, what the community as a whole wants, and then putting a plan together that meets the appropriateness of the site and what the community needs are. We've done a lot of retail development in the Denver Metro Market. We've done a lot of housing development, including senior housing. Most notably, I was with the company about nine years ago when we executed on the redevelopment of the southwest corner of 30th and Kipling, which is called Kipling Ridge, where the Sprouts Grocery Store is located, as well as Starbucks, as well as a Morningstar Senior Living community. That was a tremendous investment for the company at the time, and we were met with open arms by staff, by leadership, and furthermore, by the community. And we look at that project as indicative of what we do. We put the properties under contract, we did a lot of listening, we tried to bring the best mix of uses to the site. And furthermore, we're encouraged by the end result, right? A new senior living community for an aging population, as well as a new option grocery store at a pivotal intersection for the city of Wheat Ridge as it continues to grow and densify. We've done many different types of projects, industrial, office, senior living, multifamily, and retail, which I actually have specialized in over my 12-year career in development. And we intend to continue to study this site. We intend to continue to work with staff. And we want to make sure that we bring a project that we can be proud of, that leadership can be proud of, that staff can be proud of, but most importantly, that the community and our neighbors can be proud of here. We initially became interested in the site for a number of reasons. Number one, obviously, the investment that has been made in infrastructure. The city has spent a lot of time planning this subarea. And we've been impressed with everything that has happened, all the residential growth that has occurred at this node and the activity that has happened around this TOD stop. We've been encouraged by city policy and your vision encouraging mixed-use transit-oriented development here, which we plan on putting in place if we're successful here at the rezoning hearing. We're aligned for the city's vision for the site. And you've really done a great job of placing the infrastructure, putting in place all of the groundwork for a group like us and many of our contemporaries who've already made investments to continue to invest in this area and make it an important node for the city in a place that everyone can be proud of. That's it for now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you just verify that in order for a building to be eight stories on this property, it would have to have retail services on the bottom floor of it?
We don't currently have that requirement.
So what I was looking at when we were looking at the differences between the industrial employment and then the mixed-use commercial, I thought it said maximum height, if it's mixed-use, it would be eight stories.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, you're correct. For it to be the taller height, it would have to be mixed-use.
Mixed-use. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Omen.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions I had is if you could, if you could tell me, how many stories is the Hans? And then how many stories is the townhomes to the west? And what is their maximum height that they could, how many stories could each of those have went?
Lauren, do you know the details on that?
Yes, so the, I think the question was the heights that were built and the maximum heights that would have been allowed for the residential projects that have been completed. So the Toll Brothers project, which is the 200 townhomes to the west, was zoned the same district, mixed-use commercial TOD could have gone up to the six or eight stories, but those townhomes were three stories. The Hans Ranch project, so the townhome portion, the northern portion at 52nd, Taft Taber, and 51st, that's actually zoned mixed-use neighborhood because it was more closely adjacent to that established neighborhood to the east. So that was limited to 35 feet and built to the three stories, 35 feet. The parallel apartments, which is the apartments immediately north of the train station that was most recently completed, that is zoned the same mixed-use commercial TOD and could have gone up to the six or eight stories and was built to five stories, which is what we see more commonly in this market in terms of the new apartments that have been built in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And a question, a real brief question for staff, and then I do have a question for the applicant. But looking at the background of this property and all of the work that has been done up until now, I guess the question is, would it have been possible at the time that the area, the larger area, was rezoned back in the day to not maybe legislatively rezone this property? I guess my question is, why wait until now? Is it because there is an applicant? Or is it, was there some other reason it was not rezoned when the rest of the property was?
I can take that one. Oh, you can jump in.
I was just, yeah, I'll start and Lauren can add if she needs to. It was a separate property owner for this property. They had no interest in selling the property at the time. The other properties were zoned until very recently. So that's why it's being done separate. Lauren?
Yeah, just to add a little bit of detail on it because it had, the challenge, I think, with this neighborhood is it's been a slow burn. We started talking about a train station in this area almost 20 years ago. And we did our first planning document in 2006, and then again in 2018. And you're right, in 2018, we talked very specifically about whether we should rezone the properties north of the tracks to implement a transit-supportive zoning. That's why we created the mixed-use commercial TOD was only for these properties north of the tracks. And at the time, which was the same era when we did a legislative rezoning on Wadsworth and on 38th Avenue because we'd created these same custom zone districts for those corridors, we had made a decision, former councils had made the decision that they didn't want to pursue a city-initiated rezoning without sufficient support from the majority of property owners that would have been subject to that rezoning. And in 2012-ish, 2013-ish, the train was not opened, and it was not under construction. And it felt so much like a pipe dream that there was almost no support from the private property owners to do a legislative rezoning. If memory serves, it was really only the Toll Brothers piece, which wasn't even owned by Toll at the time. So we did not pursue the legislative rezoning at that time and just acknowledged we'd sort of respond as the market shifted once the train got built and became real. And then the pace of change has obviously increased since the train became more real in the last five years or so. And I think that's what's been challenged. So this council's been asked to respond to each individual private rezoning request, which complies with our plans that were created, you know, 10, 15 years ago. They're still relevant, I think, in our minds. We've declined a lot of residential rezone requests south of the tracks, again, to sort of adhere to our adopted plans. But you're right, it is a little bit of a different approach that forces us to kind of arbitrate each of these one at a time as they come up.
The other question is for the applicant, and I can hold on to that.
If you would like to go ahead.
Okay. For the applicant, please. I guess this, well, the first question is, you guys have been a bit reluctant to share any specifics on this because you're not at that stage of development. But the property is under contract, or have you already purchased?
Correct. Let me first introduce myself. My name is Greg Meier. I am the Senior Development Director with Confluent Development. And my address is, or actually, my work address is 2215 Market Street in Denver. To answer your question, excuse me, the property is under contract. We've been under contract for a couple months now. And stipulation with the property owner is that we will not purchase the property until we're completed with our entitlements. You know, the first stage of these entitlements are to get this rezoning so that we can have the certainty so that we can move forward with the next steps. You know, I just would like to reiterate that, you know, and as Nick mentioned, the reason that we're interested in this property is because all of the work that has taken place for the city, there's infrastructure in place, the zoning that is in place that is surrounding the property and the zoning that we're hoping that we can get tonight approved. And all of the policy and vision, it all points to that this property is the next property that should redevelop in this area. And so, yeah, we are, we're working very, you know, in a very diligent way as we go through this process. We're evaluating, but we need this first step to have this certainty so we can move forward. And just part of that evaluation is understanding the infrastructure, understanding the market. We're talking with residential market folks, we're talking with retail market folks, really trying to understand what can we do? It's not a big site. And so we're wanting to carefully evaluate all of this. We learned a lot when we met with staff and when we had our neighborhood meetings. We learned that the residents really want to see neighborhood-scale retail on this site. And that's part of what we're evaluating now. And it's neighborhood-scale retail in a location like this is a pretty small pool of retailers that would be interested. And so we're reaching out to them, but we're not ready because we don't know what their needs are, what their access needs are. And that is then informing how the multifamily might be designed. And so there's still a lot of work that we're going through, but this is the first step that we need so that we can go to that next step.
So at this stage, then, you would not be able to say, if you build residential, whether this would be condominium or townhome or whether it would be rental?
You know, we can't say that at that time. That's part of what we're looking at right now. There's a lot of factors that we're looking at. There's, you know, what, you know, how does access work? And then what type of building is that going to be? And then what type of multifamily partner might want to join us to understand what the demographic needs are, what the market needs are? So we're not quite ready yet to kind of embrace that at this time.
Right. And regarding retail, if I understood correctly, you, your company was involved in development at 30th and Kipling.
Correct.
And anybody's been by there, it's a very busy corner now. And I think that's met everybody's expectation. There is that one little strip building, though, that was put up maybe on spec, and you guys have not been able to find a tenant?
Yeah, Nick, I don't know if there is.
Oh, it is. Okay, thank you, thank you. And then, like everybody else, you're probably aware of some of the maybe more ominous signs about the real estate market these days. We're looking at a story in today's Denver Post about the number of listings in the market going up, number of closings going down. Are you concerned at all that you acquire some property that you're not be able to get support for building there? I mean, the market could change very quickly, and some of the signs are there.
You know, that's one of the reasons why we're not committing to a particular design, particular density at this time. We're wanting to really understand what would the market support? You know, our timeframe right now is from today, if we're successful to have the rezoning, it would be at least a year until we break ground, maybe a little bit longer. We'd have to go through our design process, we'd have to go through the site development process with staff, go through the permitting process. So a year to a year and a half from now, you know, things could be different. I mean, you know, there's risk in what we do. And that's part of the reason why to have that certainty today is meaningful to us so that we know that, okay, that we have the zoning. And as we start talking with potential partners that we may want to share this project with, it gives them understanding that there's support and that what we're talking about is already, you know, is already supported by zoning. It's really important for us to be able to take that next step because of the risks that we have these days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, staff, and to the applicant for the presentation. Could staff speak to the parking standards and requirements within the proposed zoning? Because that's something that's kind of come up in the public comments as well as relating to the surrounding residential developments?
Yes, it has come up as a concern of existing residents. That is true. Parking standards for the proposed zone district would be one parking space per residential unit. And then the commercial portion, it would depend, it's based, a calculation based on square footage of whatever the commercial area would be. So it would be dependent on the space.
And can staff maybe speak to the different types of uses that are available right now in the industrial employment zoning versus what would potentially be within the MUC TOD?
Yeah, so in the current industrial zoning, IE is our most intense zone district here in the city. So it would allow for commercial, and then it allows for light to medium, I guess, intensity industrial uses. So warehousing, light manufacturing, all of those types of things. Outdoor storage are all possibilities there under the current zoning. The mixed-use zoning would scale that back quite a bit. So it would be light commercial, and then, of course, retail uses, and then it would allow for the residential portion as well.
So the commercial uses was brought up in the memo. And so what you're saying is the commercial uses such as retail is not what we would typically see within the IE?
Correct.
Okay. And so we're really trying to activate this area?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Dozeman answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation tonight. Lauren, you're probably the right person to ask this question, too. With all the other areas in this development that are all zoned the same as what they're requesting, why haven't they built eight or nine stories all over the place in that area?
Yeah, that's a good question. We've been exploring that recently. Essentially, after you get past five-story building, the type of construction, the sort of category of construction in the building code changes, and the cost of construction increases substantially. So if you start to observe buildings throughout the Denver metro area, you'll often see a lack of six, seven, and eight-story buildings. It starts to make economic sense again once you hit nine, which we very consciously chose not to allow when we created those own districts. You'll sometimes see a seven-story building where it's two layers of a parking garage and then five stories of stick frame construction above it. We call that a podium. We haven't seen that construction type in Wheat Ridge. Most of our parking garages are interior wrapped by the apartments. So it really is, while the zoning allows it, there are significantly more factors in the building code that often inform or limit, for all practical purposes, why somebody would stop at five stories instead of maximizing our zoning allowance.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Are there any more questions of counsel? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Larson, may I have a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Council Bill Number 11-2024, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 11910 West 52nd Avenue from industrial employment to mixed-use commercial TOD on second reading. Order it published and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the public that came out to speak tonight, as well as those that submitted comments in regards to this rezoning. We, I recognize, and the concerns are extremely valid as to parking and increased traffic. We have talked for years about where these denser residential housing is most appropriate. And we agreed that along the TOD, as well as along our commercial corridors, what would be the most appropriate for these types of developments. And I think that the mixed-use commercial TOD allows for a broader use of this area that we have really tried to activate, not only because of the TOD site, but also because it's been a vastly underutilized area. And so there's not very much opportunity for this to come about. And, you know, when I first got onto council and we were talking about the TOD ward site projects, we nicknamed it Base Camp. And so the intention really was to try to encourage outdoor recreation users, retailers, to come to Wheat Ridge. And I would love to see that idea come to fruition if at all possible. But I definitely think that the mixed-use commercial TOD zoning is the most appropriate use for this space. And I really hope to be able to activate this area and and get rid of some blight, which I know some of this area is suffering from. So just appreciate all of the comments and I'm excited to see what this project could bring because Confluent has been a great partner in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm definitely in agreement with my fellow council member, Dozeman. This area has been a long time coming, and there's very few areas in Wheat Ridge that we can have this type of height and density. And even having the opportunity to do that doesn't always yield the height and density in this area. But, you know, it's with, it's Wheat Ridge's only station, the ward station is the only one in Wheat Ridge that we have this opportunity for. And I just want to thank staff and the people for, you know, coming and speaking your mind. You know, I've definitely heard you, but I'm definitely supportive of changing the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holteem.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank everyone tonight, especially the public, for taking time to show up in person and share perspectives. I just agree with with both Councilmember Dozeman and Ohm. We don't have a lot of opportunities for this. During the last election season, actually knocked on almost every door in the new development there and met a lot of new Wheat Ridge residents. And the particular little corner of the city is somewhat detached from the city in a lot of ways. Some people didn't even know they were really, like what where Wheat Ridge really was as a city. And so I am excited at the opportunity for them to have more placemaking and more commercial and retail that makes that feel like it's more part of our city. They, they're getting on the light rail and spending their dollars in Arvada, and it'd be good for them to have Wheat Ridge businesses to patronize. You know, to that end, we've set a lot of policy priorities as a council in the last couple of years around housing affordability. You know, part of the the parking that this project would be allowed is to lend itself towards more affordable housing. And so my hope is that in a location like this, where we've got the height and the density and the access to transit, and we've made amendments to our parking requirements, that that does translate into attainable housing. Twice this weekend, I met new residents, both of them are District Four residents, not mine, who are renting here and really want to stay here long term and feel like there aren't enough housing options for them. And so the housing diversification is a real need for us, not just to attract people to move to our city, but people who come here and fall in love with it and want to grow within the city. So I think the diversification that this project would bring forward would really be amenable to that. But I'm also just really excited with the mixed use, bringing sort of more of that placemaking and identity that makes Wheat Ridge just a unique and quirky combination of a lot of smaller neighborhoods. And this type of investment has the potential to deepen that. So I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please bowl the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move to agenda item number three. Counselor Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Council Bill Number 12-2024, an ordinance amending Chapters One and Thirteen of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the acceptance of electronic signatures. At issue, the city's current Code of Laws does not address the use and acceptance of electronic signatures for summonses issued by the Wheat Ridge Police Department. However, the Wheat Ridge Police Department is planning to implement the use of electronic summonses by August 2024. To match those practices of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, the enclosed ordinance amends current regulations to allow the municipal court to accept electronic signatures for all types of summonses issued by the Wheat Ridge Police Department.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
Yeah, the issue statement is pretty self-explanatory, but Mr. Dahl is here to add maybe a few comments.
Let me just add a, thank you. Let me just add a couple of things to the issue statement. This just demonstrates a progression that we've seen in other parts of our lives and other arenas, moving toward electronic signatures. And now it's here. This comes to you as a request both of the police department and the municipal court. And because signatures are mentioned several places in the code, you see this ordinance as kind of a solid bar, really, in the sense that it it amends a few things in Chapter One and then skips over to the Model Traffic Code. It's possible we'll find some other references. We looked pretty hard, but we think we found the right ones. The Chapter One is really kind of general stuff and enforcement provisions for all municipal ordinances and requirements. The sections in Section Three on the second page of the ordinance amending the Model Traffic Code do the same thing. And they recognize that a signature is valid if it's a signature, if it's a person's mark, if they are illiterate and make their X, which happens still occasionally, or an electronic signature. And so we've tried to harmonize that and make that true throughout. Importantly, so that summonses and complaints and responses to those and the jurisdiction of the court over those persons can be effective and proper if they have signed by their electronic signature since matter jurisdiction as well. I appreciate your taking care of this. And I know the police department and municipal court appreciate it as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Dahl. Before I go to questions of counsel, we would invite the public to speak. At this time, I have no one signed up to speak, so we'll go to questions from counsel. Are there questions of counsel from staff on this item? Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dahl. I just was wondering if there have been any legal challenges regarding the electronic summonses or signatures that we need to be considerate of?
Not of which I'm aware at this time. There's always, there's always someone who will complain that the court doesn't have jurisdiction because the date on the ticket is wrong, or we haven't seen a complaint because of an electronic signature. Could well happen, but I'm confident that, especially when you dealt with it by code, that those those objections will be defeated, and even if they're up on appeal. If we're lucky, some other jurisdiction in Colorado will have that appeal. They'll make the law at the Court of Appeals, and we won't have to do that. So.
Are there any further questions from counsel before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Hoppy, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 12-2024, an ordinance amending Chapters One and Thirteen of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the acceptance of electronic signatures on second reading. Order it published and that take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Dozeman. Is there discussion upon the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please bowl the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number four. Counselor Holteem, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 13-2024, an ordinance amending Section 26 dot four, 646F of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws regarding approval of non-conforming accessory dwelling units. At issue, the proposed ordinance extends the grace period to legalize existing dwellings that may qualify as accessory dwelling units from August 15, 2024 to August 15, 2026.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading. To set the date, time, and location for a public hearing, it is quasi judicial. So I will caution the council to be juris, to be careful when you talk about this item. May I have a motion on this item, Counselor Holteem?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2024, an ordinance amending Section 26 dash 646F of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws regarding approval of non-conforming accessory dwelling units. On first reading, order it published. The public hearing set for Monday, August 12, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and then it take effect immediately.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Would the clerk please bowl the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we will go to agenda item number five. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to accept the 2023 financial statements from Clifton Larson Allen. At issue, Section 1015 of the Municipal Charter for the City of Wheat Ridge requires that an independent audit be performed annually of all city accounts. In 2023, the city received more than $750,000 in federal funds for Wadsworth Boulevard, which also triggered a single audit of all federal funds. The CPA firm Clifton Larson Allen, CLA, performed both the city and federal audits of the city's financial statements for the year ending December 31, 2023. Once again, this year, the cities received an unmodified opinion indicating that the city's financial statements are fairly and appropriately presented. A representative from CLA will be at the July 22, 2024 city council meeting, that's tonight, to present the 2023 financial statements to council for acceptance.
Thank you. This will be a motion to counsel. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Ally Schecker, Deputy City Manager, will introduce our guest.
Thank you so much, Mr. Goff. Delighted to welcome back Allison Slyfe, who's a principal with CLA. We're so grateful to Allison and her team. This is at least the sixth year, I think, that CLA has conducted our audits. So welcome back. With us this evening, we also have our finance manager, Mark Colvin. He's right over here. And obviously, Mark and his team took the lead from the city's perspective on partnering up with the auditors to do this good work. So I'll turn it over to Allison. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. To Allison's tonight. So here we go. Good to see you all again, and thanks for having me. So we will just cover some of the highlights from the audit process. This is related to your 2023 year-end financial statements. So obviously, the numbers are a bit dated, but it does take quite a while to get through a whole audit, as you can imagine, of the whole city. So we're excited to present the results tonight and certainly happy to answer any questions. That council might have any comments, things like that. So within your packet, you should have had electronic versions of these. I'm just going to kind of summarize the Cliff Notes version of these. But certainly, if you all wanted me to expand on any information I'm going to present, I'm happy to do so. So the first I'll cover, which is highlighted within the agenda kind of summary, is our letter that's addressed to the mayor, members of city councils. It's on CLA letterhead. It's really just a summary of the results from the audit, any sort of major changes that might have happened, any sort of findings, things like that. So I'll just cover a couple couple items here, but this is a standard letter. Just a reminder, we are engaged to perform the audit on behalf of city council directly with city council. So this is on, that's why that's addressed to you all as part of this letter. So at the top, it just kind of talks about what we did audit. It does talk about any sort of major changes that would have happened as it relates to accounting policies. One item of note, there was a new accounting policy related to subscription-based IT arrangements. So SUBIDA is that acronym there. Another new accounting pronouncement that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASBIE, put out for all governments to implement. If you remember, maybe a few years ago, we had implemented the new LEAS standard. The SUBIDA standard is very similar to that, just any sort of arrangements that you might have had on a long-term basis. Basically, are now shown as a long-term liability offset with a right-to-use subscription asset. So very similar to the LEAS standard that we talked about a few years ago. So that was adopted, and that is shown within your audited financial statements. There's disclosures and different things that have to be talked about for that. But that is a big lift, certainly for the city as well as other governments, to make sure that all items are captured, it's complete, things like that. So did definitely certainly take a large lift from your staff as well as the auditors to implement that standard. That is the only new kind of major change that happened from an accounting policy standpoint. Otherwise, we, at the very bottom of that letter, we do talk about, we do call out a couple items that are more detailed within your actual financial statements themselves. But one of them is a disclosure around a restatement to beginning net position. Net position's similar to equity on a concept if you were to compare it to a company's financial statements. We did have to restate related to accounting error that was identified and was corrected. So that basically just updated your beginning equity for the year. So there is more more discussion about that. I'll cover that maybe in a second. But did want to just call that out, that that is disclosed within the financial statements. I'm going to the next page. A couple other just kind of quick highlights. We, if we were to have any sort of difficulties or disagreements with management as far as how things are treated or reported, we'd report those. We're happy to report we did not have any of those. So that's some of the highlights from the letter. We did have a couple corrected misstatements, which means they were adjustments that were made to the financial statements or accounting records to make sure things were materially correct. So that's how we got to that unmodified or clean opinion that we talked about. So we were able to issue that again this year, which is always the best result of an audited opinion, just to reiterate what was already mentioned from the summary. Otherwise, it just refers to some other letters. Within there, just for your reference, there is a management representation letter. We do get that signed by management as part of our audit issuance process. So basically saying that management gave us access to the records we asked for. They let us review board minutes, you know, city council minutes that you all have, a whole long list of things. So that's just attached for your reference as well. That's really the biggest summary from that letter specifically. We do, within that letter, it does refer to some other communications. So that's just more as an FYI. We did have a best practice comment, which means it wasn't a finding, but it was a best practice comment around IT. So that is a separate issue. We directly issue to management from a security standpoint and making sure we're okay there. We can certainly cover that in more detail if there's questions. But just did want to mention that because that is referred to within this letter. And then we do have a summary of the actual findings that we did have as a result of the audit. So that's, that's, we kind of number them one, two, three, four, in terms of the sequential order of the financial statements. I'll cover that in a second, but I just wanted to mention that, is that's also summarized within this letter. So that was everything in the kind of this formal communication letter. Happy to address any comments from that. If not, I'll switch to the actual financial statements themselves.
Do we have any questions at this time? I had one. Can you direct me to where your opinion is stated?
Yes, yeah, no, great question. We're actually going right to that, so that I think should just be at the next section of your electronic packet. It'll be labeled 2023 Financial Statements, and then within there, I don't have the electronic page offhand, I'm sorry, but within there, it's labeled Page Number 1, so it's just a couple pages in right after the table of contents. It's on CLA letterhead, and it'll say Independent Auditors Report at the very top. Yep, thank you so much. Yep, I read that, so I had that in my reference. Yep. So you have Page 97, it sounds like. So that starts that audit opinion that I had mentioned that is unmodified or a clean opinion, and that is really in that second paragraph, if you're looking at the report on the audit of the financial statements. That is called out in that second opinion, saying that everything was presented fairly in all material respects, so it's a lot of just audit speak for being a clean opinion. Otherwise, just a couple other pages, similar wording to last year, but it does talk about our responsibilities, auditors, management's responsibilities of the financials, so a lot of just long reading if you want to read all the details of the audit opinion, but that's the biggest thing, is that it was an unmodified opinion. Right after those pages is the management discussion and analysis or MDA section. Just wanted to mention that because that's a good just summary of year-over-year changes that happen. It is written by management. It gives a little bit of commentary around changes, so if there was something you were curious about, there's a good summary of kind of what happened historically from '23 to '22. From there, there's a number of pages, so certainly, we won't cover all of that tonight, but starting on Page 16 of the hard copy financial statements, so that's probably 100 and some, I can't add that quickly, but yeah, thank you, yeah, whatever that is. 112 starts the Statement of Net Position, so that is your basically balance sheet for the whole city, and so that is an all-in look, really the only time you get to see that kind of all-in look of all of your capital assets are shown, all of your long-term debt is shown, your component unit is shown. So there's a lot of detail within here, but this is on a full accrual basis of accounting, so this shows kind of everything that the city would own and have and owe, if you will. That net position at the very bottom that I was talking about, basically equity for the city at the end of the year, is shown 182 million at the very bottom of that page. And then the following pages, just real quick, because it's kind of a strange-looking financial statement, the page right after, Statement of Activities. This is the All-In Income Statement showing for the city, just something unique, if anybody hasn't looked at the detail of this before. It does show your expenses first on kind of the far-left column, so those are all that basically, you know, what you all are providing as a city to your citizens within the city, and then in the middle, it does show your charges for services and then your grant activity, so any sort of charges that are receded in, and then any sort of grant activity. And so you can see kind of to the right of that page, you would be operating at a large deficit if you only had those sources of revenue, but then you kind of jog down to the middle of the page, you do have general revenues, as you all know. You know, the city is able to support itself through property taxes, sales taxes, you know, all the different lists of kind of those general revenues. So that's kind of why it's shown that way. It's supposed to show the expenses, you know, what you're providing as a city to your citizens, and how you're able to pay for those services. So at the very bottom, you can see overall, that's how we got to that 182 million that I just mentioned in terms of net position. Then there's just a lot of other, several other pages of financial statement detail more on a shorter-term basis, so that's kind of why we have to show a long-term basis for financial statements versus shorter-term basis that you're kind of more used to seeing, and your kind of normal budget-to-actual schedules, things like that. So that's the next several pages. After that starts the notes to the financial statements, and that really takes you through most of the rest of the financial statements. There's a lot of narratives around the detail of the numbers, you know, accounting policies, a lot of detail if you want to dive into that, but it does show, you know, cash and investments, capital assets, debt, all of that activity, some of that new implementation of the subscription-based IT arrangements are shown in there as well. And at the very back is the last thing I wanted to cover. If you go all the way to the compliance section at the very back, which I'll mention what page that is in a second here. So it starts on Page 65 of the hard copy. This will be the single audit section. I don't know if you have that handy by chance, Patrick, but at the very back, once you get to that, as was talked about at the very beginning, because you all receive federal funding, you do go what's through a single audit. So that's a deep dive into your federal programs, where we have to actually audit for compliance as well as internal controls related to those federal programs, and so basically, there's a whole section in the back of your financials that cover the results of that. So a couple different pages of basically auditors' reports that talk about what our opinion was. It talks, there's a summary, Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, that summarizes your actual federal programs that you had, about 10.8 million that you received, and then it does have the summary of findings and question costs, which is a hard copy, Page 72. And this does have a summary of any sort of findings that we would have had over the financial statements, and also the major federal programs. We did test the Highway Planning and Construction Program this year, and so there were, I kind of briefly mentioned before, but we did have a couple different findings that we did have within your results of your report, so there's kind of two main sections over the financial statements themselves and then federal awards. So starting, the finding I mentioned before was 1, 2, 3, 4. So finding 1, we did have a material weakness that did result in that restatement of a beginning net position, basically related to a timing issue of 2022 activity that hadn't been caught basically until 2023. So that was a large enough amount that had to be recorded and corrected to be properly reflected, and so it was corrected, like I said, you know, the financials you see in front of you are materially correct, but that was a big enough adjustment that we did have to report that within the findings. The second finding we did, related to leases, so I kind of mentioned before, we've had two big years of new accounting standards, so leases was back in '22. '23 was the IT arrangements, and so there was a couple leases that were discovered after the year one of implementations. Those are properly shown in your financial statements as well, but those were large enough that those did result in a correction. And then the third finding was related to just overall kind of year-end accruals and kind of cleanup of activity. Again, these were corrected within your financial statements, as noted in the finding, but finding number three did kind of summarize that high-level activity, some of those audit adjustments that were made to properly report things within your financial statements. The last finding was related to kind of a unique transaction that happened in the prior year. It was corrected, and so that's properly reported as well. That's a significant deficiency, so that's a step down from a material weakness. That's finding number four, related to property held for resale. Again, that was a timing issue where it should have been fixed in the prior year, but was fixed in '23, but it was, like I said, correct at the end of the year, so that was related to the Urban Renewal Authority. We did not have any findings, though, over the actual federal program itself, so compliance with federal rules, laws, things like that that we have to audit. We did not have any of those findings. The last, just to summarize, the last pages does summarize the results of any, basically, we have to follow up on prior year findings, and the finding we had in the prior year was corrected, and so that's always a positive thing when you can see improvement year-over-year, that things are remedied. And then there's a corrective action plan that does show management's responses to the findings and kind of what that plan is to remedy those into the future. So just wanted to cover those, as there's a lot of detail in there. I could talk, you know, quite a bit on that detail, but just wanted to summarize those as best I can. So that kind of formalizes the formal findings I wanted to talk to you about in comments, but did want to just thank again management for all the help. I will say, we were able to issue this audit on time and did not have to do any sort of extension or anything this year, which we've had to deal with for a variety of issues in the prior year, so that's always a positive thing to be able to get timely financial results and issue the audit on time as well, but do want to just express our appreciation because, you know, this boils down to about 100 pages, but it takes a lot of time and effort by management to get to the results we did. So with that, I'll stand for any questions or comments, if management had any other comments I missed.
Thank you very much. I have no one from the public signed up to speak on this item, so I will go to questions from counsel. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Allison. Appreciate your appearance tonight. And as I was reading this adventure story-
Nice. I've never heard it called that.
I appreciate, again, all of the effort that goes into something like this, and getting it in on time is certainly an accomplishment. I just, I have just got a question, but it's more of an observation on the findings, and while there was apparently no disagreement between the findings, mostly because these were issues that were brought up by the city, brought to your attention in the beginning, so it wasn't anything that was hidden, but I guess my question is, if you've got a, the end of the year is on December 31, and you don't get invoices from your contractor for a month or two months later, what is the proper procedure for that?
As far as, yeah, whether you need to consider that for the prior year or not-
Whether it goes back to the prior year.
Yeah, sure. No, that's a great question. So that's part of the procedures that do happen, you know, the audit doesn't get issued, obviously, right after year-end, so, you know, management is closing the books, you know, kind of doing all of their procedures that happen for several months until the audit actually happens. So generally, the audit, you know, is happening April, May, June, let's just say, as a general timeframe, so kind of the expectation is that things are reviewed after year-end, you know, subsequent to year-end, to make sure that they're captured in the right year. You know, what I didn't go through, but certainly, there's a lot of detail, is that in a lot of these cases, it related to a lot of construction activity, a lot of things that relate to other third parties, other governments, state government, you know, a lot of different individuals are involved with these processes, and so it can be hard to kind of, you know, talk to all the right people, make sure you get all the right information as part of the closed process. So just in general, it is important, though, to review those things after year-end, and really, if it did happen, you know, related to the prior year, kind of getting on top of that as best you can, bringing proactive, like an invoice, let's say, as an example, making sure that contractors are reached out to, that sort of thing. So just generally, that, just to try to address your comment there, but certainly, yeah, if management wanted to add anything else to that, or if I said anything that you don't agree with, please, please correct me, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's-
Yeah, please, oh, yeah.
I was just going to say, that's definitely correct, and I think just a more, larger observation, too, is Wheat Ridge has, as you all know, things are much more complicated than they were 20 years ago here. We have many more projects we're working on, a lot of grant funding from federal agencies, state agencies, and it shows in our audits, our audits are much more complicated. But, yeah, it is, year-end's very difficult. Mark could probably attest to it, to get everything we need to make sure that it gets supplied to the right year, and, you know, we make a lot of phone calls and emails to these departments, but, you know, you get it when you get it, and we do our best to try to get it in the right year.
And then just to wrap that up, as an auditor, then you are required to list something like that as a finding?
If it's material enough, yes, we are. So because you all go through a single audit, like I mentioned, that's kind of the classifications, material weakness, significant deficiency would be a step down from that, and then kind of best practices, internal control deficiencies is a step down from that, so anything that raises to that level of a material adjustment, unfortunately, we're kind of bound to the standard of needing to report it that way.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Additional questions from counsel? Not seeing any. Okay. Allison, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Yeah, thanks.
Counselor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to accept the 2023 financial statements from Clifton Larson Allen.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will the court please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
Just want to thank Mark also, Colvin, our finance manager, for this. It's a lot of work, along with everything else we have to do on a daily basis.
Thank you all very much. Great to have a clean audit, so get that done for the year. Okay. Agenda item number six, Counselor Weaver.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number 35-2024, a resolution approving an amended intergovernmental agreement concerning animal sheltering, dog licensing, and funding of the Foothills Animal Shelter. Shall I read the issue?
If you would, please.
The, at issue, the Foothills Animal Shelter Board of Directors has recognized a need to update the intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the cities therein to make participation in the dog license program optional, remove licensing requirements, set assessment calculation that is predictable for the parties, and to authorize the development of an IGA that includes the shelter as a party to establish operational terms, an operations IGA.
Thank you. This will be a resolution to the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. These are fairly minor cleanups of this IGA, but Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant City Manager and the President of the Foothills Animal Shelter Board, will give you a little bit more information.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Every few years, the needs of the Foothills Animal Shelter does change, and so we come forward to you all with updates to the IGA and recommended amendments to that. So there's mostly housekeeping items, but there is one item that I do want to highlight in particular, and one is that the participation of the dog licensing program is being updated to be optional, to remove dog licensing requirements. This is not going to change for the city of Wheat Ridge. We are staying in the licensing program. So for this, this does not affect us, but we want to make you aware that other municipalities are opting out. Moving forward, we anticipate, as it stands now, that Jefferson County, Lakewood, and Wheat Ridge are going to be the remaining cities in there. You may ask why that is changing, and part of it is that several many moons ago, this was a revenue generating program. We were getting over 20% compliance with our dog licensing. Now we're hovering at about 5%. So it's a tough world out there for licensing, and now with microchipping, it's sort of doubling in terms of how it serves a similar purpose. So the cities are finding that it's not how they would like to move forward. However, we work with our animal control, and they still find licensing to be really valuable in Wheat Ridge, so we're going to continue moving forward with it. We're going to assess its value moving forward, and if we decide that it maybe doesn't make sense to move forward anymore, we'll work with you all to make the necessary code amendments and have that discussion with you all. Other than that, the assessment calculation is going to be more predictable for the parties, and that is tied to the licensing, so now it's going to be sort of one number, and if you're participating in licensing, it's going to be a separate kind of combination of costs for the city. It's net even for us to be participating or not participating, so there's really no financial change for us on that end. Additionally, we're removing language regarding injured wild animals. That's really just a housekeeping item. And then, as Patrick, or as we mentioned, authorizing the development of a separate operational IGA that the shelter can be party to. Right now, they're not party to the IGA. We think that they should have the opportunity to have that. So those are the major updates. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this, so we'll go right to questions from counsel. Counselor Larson?
And could you just very briefly tell us why the shelter needs to be a party to the IGA?
They won't be a party to this IGA. They'll be creating their own separate agreement. That'll have more to do with their operations. They'll be able to, we're not, so that way, we're not obligating them to something that they're not a party to.
Any further questions from staff on this item before I ask for a motion? Okay. Thank you, Mary Ann. Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on Agenda Item Number Six?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 35-2024, a resolution approving an amended intergovernmental agreement concerning animal sheltering, dog licensing, and the funding of the Foothills Animal Shelter.
We have a motion and a second, but Counselor Ohm, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Counselor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to approve appointments to the IDEA Committee. At issue, the city council appoints members to the city's committees annually and as needed throughout the year to fill vacancies. The newly-created Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accessibility, or IDEA Committee, is comprised of 10 members and one non-voting city council liaison. Staff have received nine applications to serve on the committee. As a hybrid committee, the city council may appoint four district representative positions and ratify staff's nominations. Additionally, the mayor may appoint a non-voting city council liaison.
Thank you. Let's see. We don't have any staff presentations-
Nothing additional from staff, unless you have questions.
Okay. So anyway, we are ready, I think, to go to the motions, and I would like to go to Counselor Hoppy for the District Number One motions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am excited and pleased to be making these motions. I am excited and pleased to be making these motions. I move to appoint Morgan Richards to fill the vacant District One position to the IDEA Committee term to expire March 1st, 2027. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will go to District Number Two, and I will ask Counsel Holteen.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Jay Kim to fill the vacant District Two position of the IDEA Committee term to expire March 1st, 2022nd, 2027.
Second.
Will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
We will move, go to District Three, and Counsel Weaver, would you please make these motions?
I move to appoint Diana Lopez to fill the vacant District Three position of the IDEA Committee term to expire March 1st, 2027.
Second.
Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll go to District Four motions, and Counsel Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
I move to appoint Lynn Browning to fill the vacant District Four position of the IDEA Committee term to expire March 1st, 2027.
Second.
Will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
And I will go to Counsel Snell for the at-large motions, and would you please do all of those in one motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to ratify the staff-nominated appointments of the IDEA Committee as follows. Appointment of Gretchen Trebs from District Two for an at-large position, term to expire March 1st, 2026. Appointment of Pamela Goff for an at-large, non-resident position, term to expire March 1st, 2026. Appointment of Alex Goldsmith from District Two for an at-large position, term to expire March 1st, 2026. Appointment of Samantha Cook from District One for an at-large position, term to expire March 1st, 2026. An appointment of Kay Nanette Briggs from District One for an at-large position, term to expire March 1st, 2025.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council? Hang on. We're gonna go that next, next one. Okay, go ahead, can you vote?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Mayor Protem Stites, please, on the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to ratify the mayor's appointment of Councilmember Snell to fill the vacant, non-voting city council liaison position of the IDEA Committee term to expire March 1st, 2026.
Second.
Will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. Very good, counselors. We've gotten that item completed, and I believe with that, we can go back to our agenda and see if we can't go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a real quick, exciting announcement. Dr. Cog received a $200 million grant, Climate Pollution Reduction Grant. How this will be, benefit us and our residents, potentially benefits, our residents, businesses, and institutions will have access to home decarbonization program for low-income and disadvantaged community members, decarbonization advising for commercial and residential building orders, rebates, supplementing existing federal and municipal funding, primarily for energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements, workforce development for electrification workers, and an innovation fund for businesses with goals of generating new decarbonation solutions. So this was a pretty good coup for the state of Colorado. There was over 300 applications. Colorado was one of 25 across the nation that received this, this money. So excited about that. Our Sustainability Committee and our staff are on top of this, and we'll start digging into this a little bit more to get this word out to our community. Thanks.
Thank you. City, City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Goff? Actually, just a very short update on the green, just for council's information, and only because I was working on it today. As you know, the parking lot construction's cruising along, and Mr. Goff tells me it'll be done by the 11th of August, which needs to happen before the school year starts. But meanwhile, of course, there's the transfer of the property itself, and that's subject to this double reverter complicated system. We're working our way through the title stuff now and the form of deed. I was on the phone earlier today with, an email with the attorney for the school district and also Jefferson County Open Space, both of whom have been really helpful, because it's a tricky little set of conveyances to pull together, but they've, they've really been great team partners and have been partners and advocates rather than trying to find things wrong and helping me solve those problems. So we're hoping we had to buy a little more time before closing, but we're expecting to close in September in terms of ownership. But meanwhile, we trundle ahead and implement the agreement, and we're pleased about that. So just to let you know, that's going well. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
And we will go now to elected officials' matters, and let's start with Counsel Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things this evening. I, very important, tomorrow night, and this is pertinent because of our IDEA Committee appointments, Wheat Ridge for Equity, which is our community group, looking at equity from a community standpoint, working, will be working within the community, not so much with the IDEA Committee, but of course, there will be a lot of collaboration with that. They are having a planning meeting tomorrow night and potluck at the Wheat Ridge Center for Music and Arts. That's at 7530 West 38th Avenue, from 6 to 8. Everyone is welcome. Lots of planning, discussion around new initiatives, events, things like that, so please join us if you can. I'd also like to just say another thank you to Karen Shelkey, who so generously donated the Dancing Pony art piece that we did a ribbon cutting for last week at Prospect Park. Beautiful art piece. If you haven't seen it yet, please go check it out. And then finally, I'm just so excited to launch the IDEA Committee. This is something that our staff and a lot of volunteers put a lot of time into, and I'm very grateful to everyone for that, and I am excited for the work that we're gonna do on that committee, and just am so grateful for everyone stepping up and volunteering to be on that committee and for all the work from up staff. So thank you so much. That's what I've got.
Thank you. Counselor Holteen.
Thank you, Mayor. So maybe city staff doesn't know this, but the Colorado Energy Office was also awarded a $124 million CPRG grant, which actually includes formula funding that we will receive. So we are guaranteed to receive some funding. It'll, you know, be not a huge amount, but I want to recognize that our Sustainability Committee provided a lot of input on both of those, both of those proposals, and I, through my role both as a city council member and through CC4CA, really helped do those. And Kelly Blynn, who is a resident, District Two resident, was actually really critical to writing the Energy Office grant, and it's incredibly competitive program. As, as Patrick said, they only awarded 30 across the country, and there were 300, and Colorado was the only state that got both a local and a state grant award. So we are doing good work here, and I'm excited to see how that translates here in Wheat Ridge. And then I, too, am really excited about the IDEA Committee, and just this weekend, I, you know, I don't get stopped a lot, but I got intercepted at least four times this weekend, just out in the community, and generally, really great stuff. I mean, people are just genuinely really excited, and two of the people were like, how can I get more involved? And, and I just, I love that that's, we're the kind of city where people, when I chase them down, because they rode their bike to Happiness Gardens, and it just made me really happy. And she's like, yeah, I've lived here two years, and this is a really special place. How can I get more involved? So I want to thank folks who step up to do that more involved, because we're better for it. And I really have noticed the last couple rounds, we've been appointing people, a lot of fresh faces are showing up, and I think that is an outcome of our Wheat Ridge Talks program, in that we're engaging people and staying engaged and standing in front of them. So just, I'm excited about that, and I think we're a better community for it. And I got a walk this morning in Happiness Gardens with Ally Suck and show off just what a magical little place that was. So anyway, anytime anyone wants to walk with me in the morning to Happiness Gardens, I am always game, because it is a really fun time of year to go check it out. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And last week, I had the good fortune of attending the ribbon cutting at Taco Block, and that the, I noticed that their official opening is tomorrow, the 23rd. This is at 6551 West 44th Avenue, and the food is fantastic, and the service is even better. On Wednesday of last, or I'm sorry, Tuesday of last week, I attended the Wheat Ridge Police Department Dog Walker Watch Seminar, where we learned about some of the things that, as a person out there walking your dog outside, you can kind of keep an eye on, and, and just not, not saying you're going to get involved in anything, and they specifically advised dog walkers not to get involved, but to be aware of the situation and, and the procedures for reporting suspicious behavior or that sort of thing. So it was a very useful hour of my time, and I did notice that Lynn Browning, who is here tonight and is our new member of the IDEA Committee, was interviewed by CBS4 Denver and was had a chance to speak about the program on television, and congratulations on that, and you did a very good job. And then finally, I joined the throngs of people, the zillions and millions of people out at the New Lutheran Hospital on Saturday. I thought there was a big success, very evident of the planning and the investment and all the time and volunteer work that went into that event. Congratulations.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of bummed to hear that the green at 38th will be opening just shy of the Carnation Parade, so, which is Saturday, August 10th. Registration to participate in the parade is closing July 27th, so if you or any of your friends, neighbors, family, business owners are interested in participating, please get signed up. And I also wanted to thank members of staff and city council and the mayor for attending the ribbon cutting and dedication event this last Thursday for the New Lutheran Hospital, as well as the approximately 7,000 people that came over a four-hour period of time on this past Saturday to celebrate the opening of the new hospital. Great energy and enthusiasm, very excited. We're still on track to move patients and open on Saturday, August 3rd, so really excited to be opening that new facility in, in the community. Great showing, so just really a testament to the, the public input process and, and also the partnership between the city of Wheat Ridge and Lutheran Hospital. So just really appreciative of that, and in that same breath, just want to apologize for rushing out of council last week. It would not have been, you know, our family's final farewell without one more visit to the Lutheran Legacy Campus ER. My younger son busted his lip pretty bad. He's okay, no stitches, wasn't as bad as some of the other visits to that ER, so, and, very thankful for that. And also very grateful for Lutheran Hospital and their legacy in this community. You know, having lived here my entire life, I've visited on, for multiple occasions, for multiple members of my family. I was actually talking to a member of the community this last Saturday and realized that Lutheran has cared for five generations of my family, and so it's a really big testament to their care in, in Wheat Ridge and the surrounding communities. And then one last thing, the Clear Creek Makerspace Mural Community Paint Event, their second event, is this Saturday, the 27th, from 9 to 2, so hoping to see some folks in District Four come and explore and enjoy that space, and thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The time has come again for those of you who bake pies. It's a very special thing happening at the Carnation Festival. It's the pie contest. It's creating quite a buzz in its, how many years has the pie contest been going on? No, but it's been going on for a long time. Okay, help me out here, folks. It's getting bigger and bigger every year. The pie is delicious. It's not a pie-throwing contest, it is a pie-baking contest. And so this is a fun way, not that all the other ways aren't fun, to get involved with the city, but baking a pie is definitely a great entry into city stuff. That will be happening on Saturday of the Carnation Festival around midday, and there will be more information posted online at thecarnationfestival.com. Bring those pies.
What an appeal. Counsel, Counsel Oom.
I'm getting, I'm getting hungry now. I attended the, the new hospital campus, and I just want to say thank you to, you know, like my, my predecessor, Zach Urban, and we were chatting, and all the other former city council. This was a, this was a long time, a really big project, staff put in a tremendous amount of effort, and it was really nice to see the other neighboring communities, city council people and their mayors from our neighbors, Golden, Edgewater, Nevada, just to name a few, and the county commissioners, all showing up for this partnership. It's a, it took a long time, there's so much effort that went into it, and I'm really appreciative to all that. And, you know, and I, as people, you know, said, thank you, you know, you know, this is amazing hospital, to me, I said, this is a wonderful opportunity, because we, not only did we get a brand-new hospital, but it also became a catalyst for opening up another property that we can develop. And so, you know, wow, it's just, that is so amazing. And then I also want to give a little, little shout-out to one of my constituents, Candace. I was going on a, going on a walk at Crown Hill. Would encourage everybody to do that when you get time to do it, and, and I saw Candace, she was planting some native plants on the south side there, and she was trying to fend off the rabbits and, and grasshoppers, and we were having chats about, you know, what we could do and, and watering, and I just thought, like, you know, she's really busy, and so everybody try to get involved when you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I am very excited that we are able to appoint to our IDEA Committee tonight. I do want to just give a thank you to all of the volunteer citizens that spent a year, just over, just over a year, actually, and hundreds of volunteer hours to put together our recommendations, the Race and Equity Task Force, and the IDEA Committee was one of those recommendations. So I'm very happy to see that coming, and I just also want to just call out Councilwoman Snell, who was not a councilwoman at the time, but spent many hours volunteering with the Race and Equity Task Force, and so I'm really happy for you to be able to see that come to fruition.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am looking forward to judging that pie contest here in a couple weeks, and that'll be my fourth year. That's, that's my favorite thing about the Carnation Festival now. I really enjoyed the, the activities at Lutheran Hospital over the week. I, I really think that that's going to be a great catalyst for our, our city, and I am really excited about the investment that the city's put into, to that property and to everything surrounding, all the infrastructure and everything for that development, because it's, it's really going to be a, a big catalyst economically for us in the, in the coming years. And they, they put on a heck of a show the other night, it was a lot of fun. I also welcome Taco Block into the neighborhood. It's a good use of the old Club Quarter building, for those of us that have been around Wheat Ridge for a while. It's, yeah, I know, sorry, sorry to those of you guys to miss that old one there. And also, had a lot of fun at Prospect Park with the Dancing Ponies ribbon cutting the other day. It's a beautiful sculpture, and it's awesome to see that our, our community is, is giving back, and that's, that's fantastic to watch. I want to thank both Sustainable Applewood and Summit Waste Management and Local Works for making sure that District Three is very clean now. We had two community dumpster days in District Three this past weekend, so if you didn't get it out of your house this past weekend, I don't know when you're going to get it out, but both Page at Local Works and the Sustainable Applewood. but both Page at Local Works and the Sustainable Applewood community did a fantastic job with both of those, very well organized and easy to get out of, and those dumpsters filled up very quickly. Also, I wanted to say I'm looking forward to this Saturday at the Clear Creek Makerspace, and I think my family and I think our business are also doing some of that, and they're also really excited to be a part of that. I also want to, on a personal note, wish my wife a happy 18-year anniversary tomorrow. Our relationship isn't, or our marriage, not our relationship, our marriage is now old enough to vote, which is a little scary, and she will be getting something from a local Wheat Ridge business, and that's probably where she's going to dinner too, whether she likes it or not. So, if you can find it, even on your anniversary, find it by in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. I attended the ribbon cutting at Taco Block. If you have a chance to go over there, it's a great, it's another example of entrepreneurs bringing their, bringing their time, talents, and treasures into our city and making a great business. I want to thank Karen Shelkey for her donating a dancing pony over at Prospect Park, a great, great event over there. Thank you so much to our Parks and Recreation folks for helping to make that happen. It was really an honor for me to attend the grand opening, pre-opening, I guess if you will, for the Lutheran Hospital. You know, this, this property 15 or 20 years ago was not a success in our city, but through the work of really a great deal of citizens and staff and public officials and private developers and a lot of, a lot of hard work, this project has become a real treasure in our community. We're really fortunate and very thankful for Intermountain Health and to be building and opening Lutheran Hospital. It's a great asset to our, to our community. It also gives us a great opportunity to look at the Lutheran Legacy Campus and be able to sort of look out into the future and really continue to make Wheat Ridge a great place to live, work, play, and learn, and to sort of live your whole life out. So, we are not in council next week. It is the fifth Monday, so we will take the night off. We hope everyone will go and relax and come back rested on August the 5th when we have a study session. And if there's no more business to come before us, remember that school is out, the kids are around, there's lots going on in our city. Please drive slowly and safely and make sure everybody gets home at the end of the night. So, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.